Ladies and gentlemen, members of the City Council, please attend the call meeting. The City Council will be held in this 801 Crawford Street, sixth floor conference room, 5:00 PM Tuesday, June 10, 2014, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by ordering the mayor, Chair.
Here.
Mr. Edmonds.
Here.
Mr. Meeks.
Here.
Ms. Simmons.
Here.
Ms. Randall. Mayor Wright.
Here.
Thanks, Stepford. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
We have three items for you, and they're on your work session agenda. The first is a briefing on our utility project downtown. As you know, we have a utility master plan that divided the downtown into four quadrants for water, sewer, stormwater rehabilitation. And we're into quadrant one. Quadrant one visualized south of High Street and west of Effingham. And we're working from the west to the east. And so we're a block east of City Hall. And next month, we're going to be surrounding City Hall. And so we want to give you a briefing on the impact on traffic and what we're doing to keep the traffic flowing. And so, Brian? There you are. And it's this presentation here.
Got it.
Excuse me, sir. You're good.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm here to give you a very brief presentation on the downtown project and where we are. And I also have with me Erin Trimble, our Assistant Director. She's the project manager, and so we'll both be available to answer questions if you should have any at the end of the presentation. So like Mr. Rowe said, we divided the city into, or divided the downtown master plan into four main quadrants. This is the quadrant one project area. Generally, it's east of Washington, although we did do County Street all the way down to Effingham because that's where we connected to the HRSD force main. So here at the bottom is City Hall and Telos, Crawford, the old jail, so forth. And we're south of High Street. So where we are at the moment, this is the current status. The yellow areas are areas that are complete. We started this project at the beginning of 2013. And so we've gotten, the areas that are in yellow are done as far as not only all the pipe work, but the pavement, the sidewalks, and everything. So we basically have gotten all the way up to Court Street, south of County. Up here in this Dinwiddie Street area, and then over here on Columbia Street, across Crawford from City Hall, those are our two current areas where work is taking place. The numbers that you see just denote, for our purposes, that we broke this into 15 phases. And so the numbers denote which phase we're talking about, although the construction isn't actually numbered consecutively. So we're not going Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three. We do skip around a little bit. But you can see that the areas that have been completed. So up here, Dinwiddie Street, and that's our Phase 12, and that should be completed early August. And then the Columbia Street section down here in the lower right, Phase Six, we expect that to be complete by early September.
We haven't had many disruptions and complaints up in Dinwiddie. Brian?
Not too many. One of the things that we've done, that we'll talk about, is we've done, worked very hard at communicating with our folks. We do one-on-one meetings with the business owners and with residents. We do a newsletter, city website, PCTV. Our projects inspectors are out there all the time when folks are working. And so whenever we get a complaint, we try to deal with it right then. I'm not going to tell you we haven't had any because, you know, anything of this magnitude, we're going to have issues. But we work really hard to contain them and to make sure that we do what we need to do to take care of them.
How about signage for the merchants that are impacted, Brian? Are they, are we supplying that?
Yeah, most of the signs you see, especially on the orange signs, we're providing that or the contractor's part of his work provides that sign is to let folks know where they can go, how to access parking areas or whatever. So for example, right now, the credit union, and we've worked with them, they couldn't use some of their parking in the back. And they have a sign in the front of their business, I think, that says that their back parking is closed, it's only for drive-through. And then we've given them some space in the County Street parking garage to offset that. So we can, and those are the kinds of things that we're trying to do to minimize the impact when we can, you know, because we know it's an inconvenience. But the phasing allows us to basically try and inconvenience folks one time rather than just having them access to the whole area, try and confine where they work. And so we try to limit the inconvenience to one time. And then once they're done, and we get everything, pavement, everything, then we move on to the next area, open the street back up.
When do we plan to be here, City Hall?
That's next. So here we are. This is the beginning of Phase 15. So you see the area in green, that's City Hall right there, right here. This is Columbia Street, and then it goes around, and then here's Water Street that goes up towards the Renaissance.
This is City Hall per se, right here. This is the parking garage. That's the old Quartz complex, right there. And about right here is where the city treasurer has the drop box.
So the green is all you're doing there? You're not going up Water?
We are, but not at this time.
Not this time?
Not at this time. We're just focused right, and the reason, it has to do with the way our system operates. This is the end, this intersection right here at Crawford and Columbia is one end of the main sewer trunk that everything feeds into, that goes to our new pump station that is right here. You can't see it on the screen, but would be right here. It goes all the way down, and everything else feeds into that. And so that's why, we had to get that main trunk line in. And then we will do away, there's a suction well in that intersection, it's part of our vacuum collection system, and that will go away as part of this, and this whole session will be fed by gravity.
Now, does any of that tie into the new pump station we got there on Water?
No, all of this goes to the new.
That goes to the new one down here off of Washington Street?
Yes, sir.
Brian, now that we have some areas that have been completed, are we following up with some type of survey? Because I think along with the improvements, there was supposed to be some things that, like water pressure, that they would notice an improvement in water pressure.
Right.
I know in some cases, there are brick sidewalks that have been replaced. Are we following up? Because I know we have some specifications that the contractors have to follow.
Right.
Are we ensuring that those are being met?
As far as with the contractor, kind of this, following up with the contractor?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And getting the information back from the merchants.
Now, I don't believe we've done any survey of the merchants, but we can certainly do that.
That might be a good idea, because I have heard from a few that in the case of like brick sidewalks, that they feel the work is not up to par.
Would you have them contact us? We will do this.
Sure. Be glad to.
Have them, yeah. Let us know.
Okay, go ahead.
So here in the green next to City Hall, this work will begin right after the July 4th. We'll start the week after July 4th. It's water, sewer, storm. Our work is going to, if you can picture, like Mr. Rowe said, there's the treasurer's drop box. We will be relocating that to the other side of City Hall. We've worked with the treasurer and others to make sure we found a good spot for it. But you know, there's that concrete median on Columbia, that section of Columbia Street. And all of our work will be confined to the City Hall side of that concrete median.
And the new location, or the temporary location, will be right here. And we've worked, that's through the police department, the fire department, traffic engineering. And that seems to be the best location for the month of July, to have the drop box. Brian and Erin have worked hard with particularly the first floor, the constitutional officers, to make sure that we know what their needs are, to include the registrar, we've worked with the lawyers. At no time will the entrance to City Hall be impaired, closed at all.
And you'll be able to get into the garage, both exits. So the one that's down here and the one that's on the backside. So we're showing work, but this road that goes around to the Marina, that'll still be open, that won't be affected. So you can still access City Hall like you normally would if you want to park in the basement. You might have to take the roundabout way to get there, but you will be able to get in and out of City Hall.
How long do we plan on having that area occupied?
That is approximately a one month of work.
One month?
Right.
So by what, fall, September?
Hopefully, middle of August, early to middle of August, we should be done with that section there in green. And so, as I was saying, we'll be below the concrete median, so they'll still have access to the jail. And we've worked with the sheriff's department, the police department, as far as them having access for inmates and visitors and deliveries and so forth, they'll still be able to have all of that.
There's one caveat, that's barring any surprises. You can engineer and engineer, engineer, but once you start digging the hole, and whoa, didn't know that cable was there, or look at that conflict with the power line.
Where are we as far as the schedule and budget? Are we on budget, on schedule?
Well, we are not on budget, and we've had some change orders due to, like Mr. Rowe said, we've had some conflicts and things that have come up. When you do a project of this magnitude, replacing infrastructure that's this old...
And that's underground.
It's underground, you can't see it. All the engineering and design, until you uncover it, there are things that you may not see or may not realize. And actually, on your agenda tonight, we have approval for, to exceed...
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five percent. But in terms of schedule, we're actually slightly ahead of schedule, and if nothing changes from that, we're looking at May.
For example, we found that water line, point to where that water line was located. It should have had more useful life, but when we opened it up, it was deteriorated. It made no sense to ignore that and then come back and close the street and repave it. And then next year, you have a leak that you've got to tear up.
So you replaced that whole piece, that whole line?
We did. And that was a 16-inch line, so that had some...
What a small guy.
Small, so that's...
That's what the change order is on the agenda, isn't it?
Exactly.
How old was that line?
It was only 40 years old, roughly, late 70s. And so that's why it was not planned to be replaced, given its age. But once we uncovered it, we noticed significant corrosion and pitting on the outside of the pipe. And our concern was, while it might last a while longer, now's the best time to replace it, because it won't get any cheaper. We've already got the road open in order to do that. So that's what we did.
Let's go to the next phase.
So the intersection of Crawford and County was actually its own phase, Phase Seven.
Columbia.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was crossing Crawford and Columbia, excuse me. And this work will begin the first week of August, and it's going to be a 24/7 operation. It's by design, because we wanted to limit the amount of time that that intersection is closed. But that's where we have some of the most significant work, lots of, there's a lot of stuff in a very small space with water, sewer, and storm, and other things that are there. And so that whole intersection will close. We anticipate barring any unforeseen circumstances, about a five-week construction time period. So when all said and done, by early to mid-September, everything from Columbia Street, from Court, all the way down by City Hall, this whole section will be done. And will be done with that piece. All the infrastructure will be replaced, new pavement, sidewalk replacement, and so forth.
Yeah, we're really trying to pay attention to the customers, not only the public, but also the constitutional officers. We want to make some improvements downstairs on the first floor. I mean, it's really ragged, and the floor is kind of, it's got some trip hazards. But we've worked it with Jimmy that we're going to, you know, this is his tax month, so we're not doing anything during the month of June. Come July, we worked it out that we can go forward. And so that's how we approach these projects, is try to make sure that we touch all the bases. And if you see a base that we haven't touched, let us know.
All right.
That's it?
Thank you very much. Good job.
The next, on your regular session agenda, we have our independent auditor presenting the CAFR for the last fiscal year. And just like we did last year, or last year's CAFR, we're going to give you a briefing in book session, and then the auditor will give the formal briefing. So this is very similar to the same briefing that you got last year. And we're working from this document.
As John said, this is a briefing on the fiscal year 2012-13 CAFR, which is our comprehensive annual financial report, sometimes referred to as the audit. We distributed copies, hard copies of the audit to council last month, and also, the audit is available on the city's internet. As we mentioned last year, the state code requires that all cities have an audit done each year, and that the independent auditor make a presentation to City Council at a public meeting prior to December 31st. As you're aware, this year, we were not able to make that deadline because the schools had not finalized their encumbrances and the presentation of their encumbrances by that time. As soon as that was resolved, we were able to complete the audit, and that's what we're presenting to you now. The city prepares a document. We, as management, are responsible for the numbers and the content and the accuracy of the financial statements. The auditor's role is to review the financial statements and opine as to whether they, in all material respects, accurately reflect the city's financial condition. Governmental accounting and financial statements differ from the private sector in a couple of areas. One is we use fund accounting, which is almost like each, we have a different set of drawers. Each fund has its own self-balancing set of books. The fund that everybody's most familiar with, and the one that most services that people think of when they think of the city, such as police and fire, are reflected in, is the city's general fund. The accounting rules that govern how our financial statements are presented are governed by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, or GASB. Some readers find the document unfamiliar, particularly if they're used to looking at private sector financial statements. But GASB has made changes over time, particularly with the implementation of GASB 34, that are intended to make the document and the financial statements more understandable.
And let me say this, they are different from, let's say, the CAFR for Dominion Resources. But if you were to look at University of Virginia, it would be the same, because they're considered to be a governmental entity just like us, and they come under the GASB.
Well, even with that, we do have some funds, such as the Public Utilities Fund, that are displayed in a manner that's more analogous to the private sector, where you recognize depreciation and it's full cruel accounting. But the general concept with local government accounting is that it's a financial flow of resources approach. The city's independent auditors is Chair Beckett, and again, the audit partner will be here at your regular meeting to present the audit to you. And as I mentioned earlier, the auditor's role is not to go in and look at every single transaction and make sure that every single number in here is accurate. That's, the city's role is to ensure the accuracy of the financial statements. The auditors do testing to ensure that the financial statements are accurate in all material respects. They also look at the effectiveness of our internal controls over financial reporting, and they do testing around that as well. They're looking for things such as segregation, adequate segregation duties, management review policies, and so forth. The fiscal year 12-13 audit is now, it used to be called an unqualified opinion. There has been a change in the GASB, the way that the auditor's opinion is presented. It's now called unmodified, but it still means a clean opinion. The audit report also includes two compliance reports that are in the compliance section in the back. One is the internal control over financial reporting section, and the other is the OMB Circular A133, which is our compliance with major federal grant programs. The financial, the internal control section indicates that there are no material weaknesses in internal control in our financial reporting mechanisms. There were, as there have been, I think typically every year, a couple of findings in the OMB report. There are two findings related to CDG that have to do with compliance reporting deadlines that were not met. And in addition, there was a state highway maintenance fund deadline that was not met. And finally, the Social Services Special Welfare Trust had a finding related to refunding or sheeting money that's left over to the state.
Were these all minor funding, so?
Well, two were simply missed deadlines, and then the other relates to making sure that the funds are transferred over to the state.
But they consider them minor, or major?
Yeah, I mean, they're not, they're not material, it's just, it's the way that they're presented, and it's a compliance report, and you either meet the threshold or you don't. But in all these cases, the departments that are responsible for those areas have said that they have put additional measures in place to ensure that these issues don't happen Now to give you some highlights for the general fund that are included in the document. We had a couple of anomalies this year, because, as you know, we did a very large pension obligation bond issue, and we did some additional refunding bond issues. So total fund balance is 264.7 million, but not all of that is available. 64% of that amount, or 168.3 million, is the pension obligation bond proceeds that were transferred to the retirement plans subsequent to the end of the fiscal year. So the unassigned balance that was available, and since that time, council has made additional appropriations from fund balance, but it was $68.4 million, which is an increase of 14.8 million from the previous year. The unassigned balance represents 29% of your following year expenditure budget, which exceeds the council policy target of 15%. Cash and temporary investments that are reflected in the general fund are $44.6 million. Obviously, we're now, at June 10th, we're getting close to the end of the next fiscal year, so this information is dated. And we are, we're optimistic, given the changes that we have in place in streamlining our production of the document, and given the learning that we've had over the past year, that the audit process will be much smoother for 2013-14.
Do we have any idea yet how we performed on those pension obligation bonds?
Oh, we do, yeah.
Roughly, how much have we?
Roughly 16, about 16%.
About 16%?
Yes, sir.
Very good.
Yeah, and actually, I asked our actuary with New York Life to give us a quick, not a complete actuary review, but a quick update. And the funded status for those two plans have increased by a couple of percentage points over the past year because of those investment returns. So we were able to enter the market in a timely, in a timely way.
We cross our fingers when we say that, because, you know, when we were talking about this, what lies ahead are some good times, but also some really bad times. But we've had a good year.
Okay, 16, that's good.
We'll give you a briefing either, maybe in, probably in July. The decision that you made to issue those bonds was really a sound decision, and a good decision. It kept the two pension plans from sliding into the river. And we hit the market at a good time. We got low interest rates, and we've had good returns.
All right, that's good. Thanks. Go ahead.
The revenues for 2013 were slightly short of budgeted estimates, primarily due to the other revenue category. In this case, that includes licenses and permits. Expenditures were 24.9 million under budget. However, a big portion of that variance was the 13.9 million that the schools returned to the city in unspent funds. And the way we had to account for that was to reduce our expenditures that were shown in the CAFR for the schools. Net of the schools' expenditures were 5.9 million under budget, and the transfers, the required transfers to other funds were 3.5 million dollars less than budget. And all functions came in under their budgetary. The Public Utility Fund, which is another major fund, had a net position that increased from 160.4 million in fiscal year 12 to 170.5 million. In 13, that's a 10.1 million or 6.3% increase over the prior year. For all city combined funds and operations, the net position totaled just under 455 million, which is a 28.3 million increase from the prior year.
That utility fund, is most of that market-driven, the increase, or a combination? Go back to that. You said it was about 10 million from 160 million to 170?
Most of that, I believe, relates to spending less than, to underspending and budget performance.
It's budget control. It's making sure that we live within the budget and watch our expenditures very carefully, make sure that we are collecting all the revenues that are due to us in a timely fashion, and making sure that if we produce a gallon of water, to the greatest extent that we can, we bill for a gallon.
Got you.
Because if there's a leak...
But none of that is invested? We don't have any of that?
Well, it's invested.
Because that's about the treasurer.
But that's not the cause of, that didn't account for the 10 million.
That's what my question was.
The other thing that contributes to that is fixed assets, is they are doing major construction projects, because they are under more like private sector cruel accounting. Those get booked as assets, which increases our net position as well.
Shouldn't that equal, over time, the cost of operating the utilities, i.e. expenditures, general operating costs?
It should. No tax dollars go in to fund the utility fund. But early, sir...
But fees, the fees, if you may, are in that as well?
The sale of water and any connection fees that are associated with that.
Right.
Yes, sir. And if you go back to the beginning of our utility system, at, you know, 100 years ago, the city used general fund money to get into the water business. So the, there is a return on equity that we get. And the model that we use is the model that the state corporation uses for determining the return on equity for the gas company or the power company, and we fall right in that range. And we only have one utility. There are cities that have, and ours is a combined utility, it's water and sewer. So when we talk about the budget, we talk about it being combined. If we got a backhoe, it's not the sewer backhoe and the water backhoe, we got one backhoe. And if it's a sewer line that's broke at 9:00 in the morning, it's working on that sewer line. At 2:00, it's on the water line. But cities like Franklin have a electric utility.
Hopefully, they wash it off in the toilet.
Yes, sir. That's a good point, Brian. He says it, that's right. And then, some actually have a gas. When I was just a young guy in this profession, the city manager would offer a gas, maybe go up in Richmond and look at their gas operation, and their gas operation was pretty impressive. But we only have one water and sewer.
And keep in mind, this is net position, which is a balance sheet accounting. And we have some major capital projects that will be coming, that will be coming online or will be underway in the next several years, that will be debt financing. And as we issue the debt, the debt will go on the, you know, the negative side of the ledger. And, you know, again, as we complete the projects, then they will go into our assets. So it does fluctuate over time, depending upon what your net position is at that June 30 date.
Okay. Okay.
I think it's worth noting that we had three GASB changes that were implemented this year. GASB 61, which amended GASB Statements 14 and 34, that one was not as significant. But the other two were pretty significant undertakings. They had to do with deferred outflows of resources and items previously reported as assets and liabilities. And you'll see, as you look in the financial statements, there's a prior period adjustment that is related to these GASB implementations. We actually early implemented GASB 65. It wasn't required to be done until the following fiscal year, but we wanted to go ahead and get that out of the way. I also want to recognize and thank the accounting staff who did just a tremendous job this year. As you, as you know, we had a number of new employees in the accounting division, and for many of them, it was their first time going through a CAFR process, and this year was particularly challenging. And they did just a fantastic job in rising to the occasion and bearing through the process with us. We, you may not be able to see it, it's probably transparent, but we also implemented new software called CAFR Online that will streamline and make our financial reporting process faster and easier in future years. And all of the document, most of the document actually was produced using that software. So that was another big change this year. So I do want to just thank them and make sure that they get recognition for all the hard work that they did.
It's a very smart staff, and I, too, thank them for, I'd come down, I'd have a function, let's say, at by the week, and I'd come back to the office, and it's quarter to nine, and I'm thinking, as I go through the roundabout, why is that light on at the fifth floor? So I check it out, and who is it? Our comptroller. Or who is it? Our accounts payable person doing work. And not only do they do our work, but they do the work for the EDA and for the PPIC. And the council liaisons to those two authorities know how, how good they are.
And they make sure that payroll gets done every two weeks. So they're very important.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Good job.
This completes the agenda. You have council liaison reports that you might want to consider.
Do we have any reports? All right.
If you don't, then we need a motion.
There's a motion to go in to close. Somebody take us in?
I got one quick question.
Yes, sir.
I had a resident on Turnpike called today. They seen that we're paving our compound, and they was wondering, how many tons was there? And have you driven down Turnpike lately?
Okay. We'll check that out.
Turnpike is a mess. We're in the process on that section of Turnpike, widening that and getting that piece from, whether the County Street intersection to Frederick Boulevard. Is that right?
Well, let me tell you, before we, there's not enough state funds, and worse, James, and NITA, you might want to come up here, please. We have established a quarterly meeting with the district, what's called, used to be the district engineer for what used to be called the Suffolk District. It's now the Hampton Roads Transportation District out in Suffolk. And the guy's called, or the lady is called, the district administrator. But we initiated a quarterly meeting where we have all of the people who interface on our team with VDOT. And we met with them just last month. They were the host this time. And one of the topics that we brought up was the Turnpike project. And would you like to brief council on the shortfall that we're experiencing on that project that we're working around?
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor. As you mentioned, the Turnpike Road project will be from the intersection of Constitution and Turnpike to just pass a new CBS. Those plans are complete and ready to go, but there's a funding shortfall of about $3.8 million. We've made our case to NITA that we would like to see that project moved forward, and just trying to figure out a way that we can identify funding to close that gap, so we can get that project out and on the street. And they've agreed, committed to us, committed to us, and they would take every opportunity that they have, whether they're looking at federal sources or be looking at state sources, try to close that gap and get that project out on the street.
So how does that occur? We had funding, that funding was already allocated in the PD, for the TPO, that first half of it, that money was already spoken for. So how are we now three, four, and eight short?
When you actually do the engineering, design work, that original funding was based on an estimate, not on the complete drawings that are done. But it's not as doom, it's not doom and gloom. I mean, yeah, their first response was, let's take it from the Churchill and Bridge. We said, no.
No.
You're nuts. And through the meeting that we had last month, they have a chance to apply for federal bonus funds. And so about two weeks ago, I got a call from Jim Utterbach saying, we have an opportunity. Can you give me a letter? And we did a letter, we PDF'd it, we hand-delivered the letter. The letter is being endorsed and being sent to the Commonwealth Transportation Board. And if it works, we'll get that money to fill this gap.
Okay. What timeframe we looking at? It's crazy, but Turnpike is horrible, and you tear your front end up going down there. And if we're going to keep kicking this can, we need to at least go put some paving down there. Don't want to say and do that.
That was the, you know, I don't know who this gentleman spoke to. He said, I understand, and they're putting 800 tons there, and that would have done Turnpike, and, you know, and I'm like, well, only thing I do is ask about it, so...
Yeah, the sad thing, if we put it on there, it's going to be torn up.
Right, right now.
We want to get the funding so we can start the project.
I agree, but I think the perception of a citizen is riding up and down this ragged road for the last 20 years, and then we overhear the compound throwing asphalt out. Yeah, that would, yes, sir.
Well, Turnpike is awful, but some of the patchwork, High Street headed east up near the Siesta Gardens entrance. And I've noticed all over the city, some of the patches aren't to grade, they're above grade, which you go across with the cars like driving across a washboard. I don't know what...
When you find one like that, let us know.
Well, I will, I'll make note because there's quite a few throughout the city that are like that.
Okay. Very good. All right, who's taking us in to close? Ms. Randall?
On Siesta, we have an answer right here.
Yeah, the gas company made those patches. We went out and marked up those intersections and those, those areas, and they're going to come in and mill and pave those areas that are marked up full lane.
Great, okay. Great, thanks, James.
All right, good job. Thank you, James. All right, Ms. Randall?
I move to go into a closed meeting pursuant to provisions of junior code, Section 2.23711 for the following purposes. Discussion concerning the performance of specific city boards and commission members, and consideration of appointments to city boards and commissions, both as permitted on Section A.1.
One second.
Second.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
No. And I say no because, you know, the subject matter that we're getting ready to discuss was broached in the article in the Virginian Pilot. It's just my opinion, and once, once those things have been aired, you know, we're family here. What anybody has to say, I'm not afraid to share it with the public. We're not going to fire anybody or hire anybody or spend any money, so that's why I'm voting no.
Okay, very good.
Ms. Sumis?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.
Mayor Wright?
Yes.
We are in close.